Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve this resolution, number 2015-07, to the city budget.
Second.
Mrs. Nixon. Let's move in second. Discussion.
Thank you for making the numbers work, because you always do.
Hearing none. Any other discussion? Hearing none under roll call vote. Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes. Motion carries. Moving on to item N. Motion to approve purchase of a Kubota mower from Robinson Equipment in the amount not to exceed $16,943. And to send the old mower to auction.
Would you like a motion, Mr. Mayor?
For discussion in person, yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a Kubota mower from Robinson Equipment in amount not to exceed $16,943 and to send the old mower to auction.
Second. Second by Mr. Clark. Discussion. Or no, Mr. Tressman, go ahead.
Do you have any questions? Just replacing.
I say just to clarify, this is a budgeted item.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Any guesses on what we'll get for the old mower?
Oh, I wouldn't even...
Okay.
It's a pretty rough shit.
When and where do you auction such a thing?
Haven W. Incorporated, they're a western center guy.
Okay. Like, once a month? Or how does that work?
They have an auction every Thursday.
Yes.
How exciting.
So you can go down and buy them.
Well, I just... I might need to do that.
Mr. Mayor? Your old mower. Mr. Hall. Mr. Clark, proceed. How old was that mower?
1999.
Good year.
Good year. Did you spend some time on that mower?
And is the discharge the same as the rear discharge on the old one was too?
Pretty much exactly the same.
Pretty much.
Just a newer version.
Okay, same side motor?
Yep.
Yeah? I didn't beef it up some. It was adequately powered, I think.
Oh, yes.
Those are good power. It looked like a good machine every time I saw it run around.
I'm in favor of this motion, however, I think that maybe in view of the fact, you know, a couple of years ago, we ran out of money in taking care of the cemetery, this type of thing. There was kind of... Some citizens came forward and helped us get it in shape for...
The cabbos, I believe.
Yes.
See, there are two different accounts. That's the problem. This is Equipment Replacement Fund, and that's the dental fund or the mowing grass.
Yes, I understand, but would you allow me just to make a suggestion here? When I was in your seat, Jerry, a party came to me. In fact, he's doing the soul on cemetery and doing a good job at mowing and keeping that up. And his contention was that he would like to bid doing the work in Elmwood Cemetery. I just wonder, you know, we can't do it tonight, but just a thought that maybe in the future we should think about contracting that out when you think about the price of machines and then you think about the labor and all that's involved with the taxes and the fuel and the replacement parts and so on and so forth. Let somebody else have that. And let somebody else answer to this group for the condition of the cemetery, you know, keep it in the pristine situation.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing how this pertains to money. Roll call vote. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mayor Hall votes yes. Motion carries. Um, we're in item...
O?
O. Motion to appoint a committee to negotiate a new contract with the Red Flannel Festival Board. Our understanding expires in 2015, so we're still good for this year.
And I can make the motion to put it on the table if you like, and then we can discuss it. I think I'd actually was gonna have this as a discussion item, but...
Okay, I would entertain a motion for discussion.
Okay, so a motion to discuss appointment to a committee to negotiate a new contract with the Red Flannel Festival Board.
Second. Okay, you're changing the appointment to discuss.
Well, basically, what the motion says, a motion to appoint a committee.
Correct.
So what we would be voting on would be to ask you to appoint a committee to come back to the next meeting.
Okay.
So...
Just so everybody's clear on that.
Yeah, what I'm basically asking is that the mayor appoint a committee so that we could negotiate with the Red Flannel Festival to talk about how we move the city forward with the festival in a more collaborative manner. We had had a contract, I believe it was for four years.
We need a second on this motion to proceed. Mrs. Powell, now, discussion.
Okay, I believe that we had this contract for four years, five years. And it's up, and there have been some challenges in the past. I know that circumstances have changed, the policing has changed, the council has changed, lots of things have changed, and I would just request that the mayor entertain creating a committee to meet with them to come up with some kind of an agreement.
Okay, any other discussion before I speak? Can I ask what the agreement, what kind of contract is it, what's it?
I... We have a contract right now that involves exchanges of money for services for in the past, um, I have to go look at...
Send your agenda packet.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the specific contract, I'm gonna have to go look at it, but... And I'm assuming the contracts would look different, because again, the policing is different. I don't know exactly what the contract would look like. I mean, I can't bust, we'd have to have a committee to negotiate it.
Do you need a second?
We have a second.
We have a second, we're in discussion.
The question is, are we asking the mayor to appoint a committee to come back to the next meeting?
What I see on this, you're not asking, you're requiring me because it's a motion.
It's a motion, that's what I'm saying.
Just want to clarify.
It's a motion to have you create a committee for the next.
Okay. Any other discussions?
I would be willing to sit on this committee.
We'll get to that.
To try not... Well, that's fine, but I'm just saying, I don't want anyone to think I'm trying to make work for someone else. I'm very willing to... I don't need to be on the committee, but I'm very willing to be on the committee. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Because everybody has lives and meetings and things.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those who follow same sign. Okay, my question then is, I would request a letter from individuals requiring or requesting to be appointed to this board. And then we will make the... Get things rolling, we'll get a copy of the old contract, and then even sit down with Mr. Taylor and whomever we need to decide what direction we're headed. Okay?
I'm assuming we'll need to put something forward to the Red Flannel Festival, asking them to...
Correct, we'll have to get something put together, and then we'll meet with the board and go. Okay. Item P, moving on. Discussion regarding waiving police fees for the 2014 Red Flannel Festival Bill. This is a discussion item, so there's no motion to be made. I'll open the table for discussion.
Something I'd like to add.
Mrs. Nixon?
He with the most documentation wins, so whoever has the last documentation saying either yes, we will provide police services, or no, we won't provide police services, I'd be inclined to go with that person.
Okay.
I'm kind of in the same boat. I just am very concerned that in general, and I understand we were switching our police mechanisms, but it's concerning to me that we tell someone, that we, a entity, a group, that we cannot provide services, that they should pay someone to come provide services for them, and then you send them a bill. Like, I think that's just not really appropriate for us to be doing. Now, if I'm not understanding the situation correctly, I'm open to that, but when I originally brought this up in the workshop and asked Mr. Taylor, and I said, "This is the documentation I've been presented from Roger Parent, I... Why are we billing them?", and I was told, "Well, there's alternate documentation between Chad Potts and Mark Laws." The documentation that I got on that didn't look like what I was told it was gonna look like. I'm just... I don't know. I'll shut up and let other people speak here, but that's my frustration.
What documentation did you have?
An email between Mark Laws and Chad Potts, where Chad is saying, "I still don't think we can provide you any policing, and if you would like me to contact the county, I can do that, but there will be additional costs." I mean, I can go find the email, but...
I might have it here, and I think if it's the one I'm thinking of, it came from me.
But it wasn't a... It wasn't the festival saying, "Please send us police."
I think is what we need to do here, we'll maybe have this for next month's agenda, give everybody time to get their emails together, and everybody all on the same page.
Yeah, that's why I request it as a discussion item.
And we'll discuss it. Any other discussion?
I just some comments.
Go ahead, Mr. Nixon.
First of all, whatever emails you have, you give them to me.
Yeah, I forwarded everything I have to everyone.
What... I'll tell you where it stands, and the email you may be referring to was one that was sent to me after a meeting that we had with two representatives of Red Flannel and prior to using acting chief Chad Potts. And it was from Mark Laws, and he was just summarizing the points in discussion. And then I had responded back to it, that I had a couple of clarifications, one of which was it said that the sheriff's department may have some reserve officers available during the festival. If that happens, we may be able to free up some of our officers for dedicated duty at the Grand Lodge. If we can provide dedicated officers, if you want them, there will be a cost, no granting back. So we did not dedicate any officers to the Grand Lodge. We had a contingent of officers that were in the greater downtown area...
Right.
With various responsibilities, one of which was to be in and out of the tent.
But then we billed them for the Grand Lodge, correct?
We did... No, we billed for the dedicated people. That's according to Chad Potts as of yesterday, when I talked to him. There was, without a doubt, some confusion with the first bill, and that was... A lot of it was attributed to Chad Potts had never put one of those bills together. He took the standard format that Roger developed, plugged numbers in, and so when it came up, when I remember the lady that was here at the sever meeting and was questioning the bill, and so council asked me to look into it. So it just so happened that our former chief, Roger Parent, was here working to close down the police department.
Sure.
And we asked him to take a look at that bill, talk with Chad, and figure it out. So it came down to Roger amended the bill, ended up with a refund for Red Flannel. He did... He wrote a letter, and I don't know why he put it in there. Again, I have no idea. And it was not a true statement, because it said Chief Potts was able to arrange his patrol staff to have four uniformed officers assigned to their tent each night. So the discussions that I had had with council about what this issue may address, that's when I went to Chad Potts and asked, "What's going on? I didn't think we had anybody assigned there permanently." He said, "No, we didn't." So anyhow...
So clarify for me again how that bill matches. You're telling me... Maybe I'm not understanding you. You're telling me that Roger Parent then clarified for you in an incorrect manner, in a way that...
No, he adjusted the bill to reflect what we did, and what the format that we had, I guess, forever.
So you're saying his letter didn't match the adjustments?
No, the letter matched the adjustment, he just put in there a statement that was not correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And he adjusted it, and I think part of the confusion is, is that the invoice that... And the way it's set up, because we have forever, we're down Red Flannel 5K, you know, that's a cost. Then we have one here at the Grand Lodge, October 3rd, or eight, Grand Lodge, October 4th. And so Chad just used that same format, put in the cost for particular days. He charged some expenses that he shouldn't have charged for the officers, because they were not undergoing coverage. So Roger came back, put it back in the same similar format, and apparently didn't remember to take off the fact that it wasn't just the beer tent.
So if I could make a request, then, just so that, whatever the outcome, we get it figured out, between now and next meeting, because it sounds like we're gonna let everyone get their ducks in a row, could you itemize the number of hours, is that possible?
On the bill.
We have items for five years. Well, I just, I wanna make sure that we use it, okay, well, Officer ABC and D, and if you don't wanna give their names, that's fine, were extra because of Red Flannel, they worked from this time to this time, general patrol, I guess.
We have Hall votes. You know, I'm dealing with it, I can assemble that. You know, I guess, in retrospect, what I, you know, if that mistake was made, it was not brought to our attention, and we sent, we sent the revised bill with Roger's letter, I think it was by email, by email, and Deb wrote an email, said, "Here it is, we've amended it, you're gonna get a refund, call with any questions", something like that, or email with whatever questions. It was towards the latter part of December, you know, '21, '22. And Deb heard nothing back, so she issued a refund check in, I think, the second week of January, and we've heard nothing since that there was any issues in Phillips' beer tent.
No, I brought it to you in a workshop, that it was an issue.
Anyway, let's, we can debate this all night. Let's have it on the agenda for next month, everybody get all the paperwork in order, and then we will act accordingly. And then I'll get any clarification. Huh? Some clarification on the difference between the beer tent and the Grand Lodge. Let me break down, hopefully.
There's the paint.
Let's see, okay. It's just a... May I make one little point? Okay. I don't understand Roger then continuing to charge $600 to the Red Flannel Festival for the beer tent if he didn't provide any coverage for the beer tent, and that's what he said, and it's what Chad possible. They both said that, and they did reduce the amount, but they still charged for it, and I'm hearing that they didn't provide any services.
That's not entirely correct. We provided service, there were people there, but they weren't dedicated there for the whole time, and...
And that was in agreement with the Red Flannel Festival that they would be there?
We told them we could not guarantee dedicated people as we have done in the past.
And we told them to provide their own control, right?
And they did. And what we did, because of the number of people in the whole downtown area, to include the Grand Lodge, and Chief Potts said, "This is your area, I want you out and about, I want you visible", and they went in and out of the tent, but they weren't assigned there as a permanent location. And they were not billed, and that was not the bill of being in there on a hiddenness basis.
So it would've been clear enough to have it under beer tent, it should've been under something else.
And again, it was just the format that they've used year after year on an index.
Done. Okay, we'll have this for next month. Thank you. Everybody get... Everybody clear. Okay, moving on to Q. Discussion regarding the use of the city's email accounts versus personal email accounts for city-related businesses and/or topics. This is a discussion item. I'll open the floor for discussion.
Well, this was an item I asked to have put on the agenda, because I'd requested not having city email being run through my personal email. I would just soon have it run through, my email is provided by the city for the city council members, and that just for liabilities, if they ever did need to subpoena all of our emails, I don't wanna have to have them go through mine. Because I've talked to other people that are... That deal with multiple entities where they have emails from, and they keep them separate for that reason. Like FOIA requests and stuff like that. I just don't... If the email's there, why are we not using it if it's there? I know a couple of people say they can't get access to it. If there... If it's a... What do you wanna call it, person using it? If it's near error versus a system error, is there really something where we can come in here and ask to be instructed how to use that email? Because I know the city email is different than my Yahoo, it's different than my Hotmail account, and it's different than my other entities I have emails from. So I can understand how people may have difficulties with their city email, because there's a totally different format. The only, only place I've seen that same format is at my...
I have basically three van?
No.
Okay.
So...
You all set? Any further discussion?
Well, basically, I don't want continuing to go through my personal email, I prefer to go through the city email like it should be.
Okay, Mr. Truesdale, do you have a comment? Mrs. Nixon?
I would say that perhaps we could just stop email council member, and his personal email. If the city email is working for him, I think the easiest solution is just for us to not use his personal email.
That's easy.
No, I've requested it before.
No problem, okay.
That's easy. Just to clarify, you're not demanding that all the rest of us use the city email.
Well, I think if it's there for a reason, we probably should use it.
If it works.
City doesn't even have it.
One of the times.
If it works.
Ms. Conley, continue.
I have just basically three issues. I'm happy to use yours if it works for you, that's great. I have yet to get mine to open. I'm in the 50 email a day club. I use email all the time. I use email at school, I use personal email, I know how to use email. This email has never opened. I don't know what to do about that. I'm happy to talk to Xyletech about it. I have three basic issues. The first one is it has to work. Secondly, I would like to know who the administrator is. Currently, through Google, I have access and control. If we get FOIA'd, it's on us. I mean, you all get that, right? I mean, the clerk can take things for minutes and so on, but if you write things in a meeting, it's FOIable. As a school board member, I can tell you, that's happening. I've had a FOIA request for notes I wrote during the meeting. And it's up to you, you're the responsible party to hand that over. I would like to know who the administrator is, and then what is the protocol for that happening? Because right now, what would have to happen is the city clerk would have to come to me and say, "There's this FOIA request, here are your emails", at which point I would hand it over. But if it's on a city server with an agent that I don't know who it is, I might not even know that's happening. So I would like to know what the process is for that, who's the agent, what's the protocol, what's the structure? And this is, you know, the third board I stand on, and this is the first governmental email I've been given. So that's where I'm at. But I will gladly use... I will send it to, you know, whatever email, the moon, if that works for you on the other end.
Okay. Ms. Powell?
I like using the city email. I think it had a... It's a good idea, you know, to, as we're on the website, to have that particular email address published. Problem is, right now, I don't trust it. I can't really trust that I'm getting the information that I need, and like, the agenda packet, Linda, it comes on my personal email for some reason.
I'm sending it to both your personal and your city.
I know, but it doesn't show up on the city one, that's why I don't trust it. So that's where I'm at, you know? I can bring it in and show you, but that's what's going on, I just don't trust it at this point.
Mr. Clark? I agree with the sentiment that it's a much more convenient vehicle in the case that we ever did have FOIA documents, easy for Linda, I had to get in there and find it. I think that what we do need to do, though, is again, along the same line as Council Member Conley said, we need the protocols laid out. Who has access to the emails? Who has access to be able to delete an email account? Who can go in there? Is it just anybody from the city that can contact Xyletech and say, "I need access to this email account"? Or do we need a protocol that includes the mayor, or somebody else on the council, or some other person? I don't know. But I think that right now, we need clarification along that line, so that it's not just Mr. Taylor or somebody else in the hall calling Xyletech and saying, "Hey, I wanna talk to that, I wanna get into that email account". But that's what it feels like right now to me, that could happen, and maybe wrong there. So that needs clarification for me, and a protocol would do that. Another protocol, I think, that would be very helpful would be, how long do we hold on to emails after someone stops being a part of the council? How long do we hold on to that, and how do we hold on to that? Where do we store that information? Technology, I hate it sometimes, but I think that would make me feel better about the use of it. And I do, I do use it.
The only one to access those emails is Xyletech in our request. If we had, as an example, if we had a FOIA request, and it was something, we want all the emails, you know, city emails dealing with this subject for whatever day range, I have no idea how to do it. You'd have to go to Xyletech and ask them to do it, that's what their job is.
But would it get routed through council first? Would we know it's happening?
Most certainly.
Because we don't currently have a protocol for that. Like, would we get notified? Would... I mean, would we get a phone call? Would we get a letter? Would we get... How would we know that's happening? Because right now, the way I would know is because Linda would have to contact me to get my email.
Right.
Phone call, just play that out. Okay. Hearing everyone here, I think what I've come across is have the system work, everybody wants it, and then I think we need to come up with either check with another municipality that does this, see what they have for their protocols or rules on how they store and who accesses, so then we could get...
And I have just one more thing on that. If we're creating the protocol and storing emails, it should be for all of our correspondence. Because remember, everything that you write, all the notes that you take, this can be FOIA'd.
Well, that'd be up to you to maintain that.
Right, but we...
The only thing I want this one...
The protocol for how long? Like, I would hold on to it for six months after you're no longer on board.
Yeah.
It can go in the shredder.
Well, the easiest thing for us to do is we can give you the more copies of pages of the current guide that's adopted.
Could we... Could we also check with MML and see if they have anything of sorts?
Well, we keep... We use the retention schedule that's adopted, right?
By MML.
Recommended by MML, and we adopt that, and it tells you, you know, it goes through a whole lineage of different things, and, you know, as an example, with medical records, you gotta keep them forever.
Right.
Or, you know, personnel, you know, you gotta keep applications you receive, I think, for a year. So, you know, it's all part of the record retention schedule.
Okay, that may ease a lot of people here.
But I think this most council even know what that is.
Retention schedule?
And for what you're supposed to be doing, or the...
I like the background.
Well, if we could get a copy of that, and then that way everyone could learn.
Well, that's the retention, I'm working on a revamping the record retention schedule because it currently doesn't deal with email.
Great.
And that's just come out in the last couple of years.
Awesome.
Great.
You're right.
Good. So everybody's in the green school, get a copy of that, and see where we go, okay? Everybody? Okay, moving on to Mr. Frazier. Item R, purchase of fire hose.
Part of me wants to stand up here and apologize to the council for not getting this on the agenda.
Part of me wants to stand up here and apologize to the council for not getting this on the agenda. I had thought I sent it, but somewhere it's in space, I guess.
It's an email.
Somewhere around there. Well, between here and thirty-one West Maple.
We're not Linda Hunt.
Fine.
I solicited prequels for hoses. We, with, Mr. Pajek was here, we, um, I guess, applied for a grant, and I had a Christmas list of close to thirty thousand dollars, which was, uh, like a ten percent for us. And, uh, I had money set aside, well, as of today, we have not heard anything about that grant. However, I'm pressure testing hoses, I'm...
Fingers crossed.
We're in need of some stuff, so I reduced my Christmas list to get by with a few needs until we can find out one way or another on this grant. However, if we do come across the grant, with council permission, we approve this purchase, we will still have monies to match our grant request. There is monies available in the budget for this. However, it was not earmarked specifically for this purchase, the hoses, the nozzles, the foam. So I would like council's permission to go ahead and try to place this order tomorrow, if I would have it within two weeks. Again, it's, uh, something that we do with this Hyman Fire Equipment. We've purchased a lot of stuff over the years from them, and they've been our best supplier, their most, uh, best expeditions. And they pretty much have what we want when we want it. And what I'm trying to do is, is, we had a structural fire last night up on Cedar Spring Avenue, for those that saw the post, it was Solen's fire, but we were, first ones there because we were six blocks away, which makes sense, and that's taking nothing away from Solen, but we used a thousand feet of hose. And I've got a thousand feet of hose sitting in the tower trying to get dry. And I'm getting down to the point where it's getting hard to find dry hose to replace that. So with this purchase, that'll give us, you know, a little more ample supply for backup. If we have a, if we have another structural fire tonight, and I use another, call fifteen hundred feet of hose, I will be hurt. I'm going to have to start taking it off a truck to replace on another truck. This is just something I'd like to purchase and, and stay on top of.
Who's the will of the council?
I would like to make a motion in support of this.
Thank you. Mr. Perry, second. Any discussion? Mr. Gray?
How much was the, the purchase?
Um, I got a bill for six thousand forty-one dollars and ninety five cents.
Anybody needs it, I did print it here.
We have three competitive bids.
Any other discussing? Mr. Clark?
Uh, yeah, Marty, um, now, are we adding to the total amount of hoses that we have? Or are we, with this, are, are we replacing hoses that are no longer serviceable?
Yes.
I thought maybe I did both of them there. All right.
What we have done, and we've taken upon ourselves over, well, I've been on the department thirty-plus years, and we have pressure tested our own hose. You have to run it a certain amount of pressure for a certain length of time. And we're losing hose because our hose is getting older. We buy a couple, three pieces here and there. We've got to the point now where I've donated quite a bit of hose to the water treatment plant because they can use it down there. It does not meet pressure test standards, so we can't use it on a structural fire. We will wash, park lot down or something, we can do that. We're at the point now where, yes, we're replacing, wearing up, wearing out hoses, and hopefully, if we get this grant, we can reply or resupply, replenish our, our supply. Um, this, this one out, this eight sections of two and a half and eight sections of instant recorders will replace what we have lost over the last couple, three years.
So that's just kind of bringing us to even?
It's bringing us back to ground zero, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, but do I hear, I think I'm hearing something that we need more hose so that if we have a large use of hose laid out, we can't replace it all because it's hanging up dry? Is that what I'm hearing?
We can still use it wet if it comes to the point where we, where we've stripped all, if we've stripped all three of our trucks and used everything that we have, what we call a donut, um, we, we can use, reuse the wet stuff. It's just that it's, it gets moldy and mildewy and stinks and stuff if you don't dry it, so.
It lasts longer if it's dry. Yeah, we currently don't have that. Uh, one other question. Now, do I remember a discussion several months ago about purchasing some extra nozzles?
We have this in this, in this here. Um, we had a couple nozzles not fail, but are not working well. We had a nozzle that we sent in. The manufacturer, I took it down to Allen Dale, personally drove it down to Allen Dale to, because they said they could fix it when they found out what it was. It was something that they couldn't fix because it was spring loaded, and they didn't want the chance of it blowing up in their repair shop, so they sent it back to the manufacturer. And, and I can't remember the exact price on it, but that nozzle wasn't all that old. And it had got... Dropped.
New ones?
Understand, when they're, when they're, they go off the truck, they get dropped across the air, they go through quite a bit of abuse. And that's why you buy the little bit better nozzles. And that way, we had this serviced and fixed, and it's back up and running. However, we're, as we get older and we're not replacing things, it's going to get to the point where everything's going to go to pot all at once. So what I thought was, my theory is to replace it here and there so that
You should do.
we're on top of the ballgame.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Treusdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Hall, vote for her. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
At this page, we're in the manager's report.
First thing is, uh, we received a notice from the Solen Township that they're doing a master plan update. So once we get that draft, we'll have a chance to look at it and make any adjustments that we want to make. Secondly, uh, the snowmobile drag race was, according to the organizer, a huge event for a first, a huge hit for a first event for three weeks now. Said they had, they had one hundred and sixty-two spectators and racers attended the event with a hundred and thirty-eight race teams participating.
Wow.
Were already making plans to, uh, meet and discuss next year's event.
Exciting.
So he, he was very excited about it, uh, exceeded his expectations. Next, uh, as the administrative assistant position, I've decided to leave that vacant for the foreseeable future. And we're going to, uh, assign the duties to other staff. As an example, all the department has on grants. The finance director will do the capital improvement plan, and then groundwater will be responsible for the water and sewer rings. And we'll see how that works, and I don't know whether it will stay that way, but that's, uh, we're going to give that a shot. Uh, we received an insurance refund from the MML liability pool, and also from the MML work top fund. And that was because we, uh, no longer have a police department, so we stopped that coverage. And then, uh, the reimbursement, the refund goes back to the last day that we had police officers. And between the two, it was a total of nineteen thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars that we, uh, were refunded. So that's a, a positive thing. Uh, West Street Extension. Victor Hanson from Display Pack, it's a great thing that's coming to town, really excited about it. Um, but it's presenting a challenge that I think we can turn into a, an opportunity. They're going to have substantially more employees than at Wolverine. So they're, they're estimating that probably, of course, they're tripling the number of passenger vehicles down West Street. And, uh, I've asked that they, they do a, a, a study on the number of semi-trucks they have. And, but he thinks that's going to be a substantial increase. So that's going to be, um, a lot more vehicles down there, and a lot more disruption to that period. They also work, they'll be working three shifts, then close to the couple, maybe just the one shift for Wolverine. So, um, it's been in the city's plans to extend the West Street all the way down to sixteen mile road. So, uh, that would, like I say, that, that, that issue could present as a possibility. And to work through that, I've, uh, put together a meeting at Display Pack's offices, and it's going to be involving Display Pack, The Right Place, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the Michigan Department of Transportation, Office of Economic Development, West Michigan, West Michigan Regional Planning Commission, who deals with the Federal Economic Development Agency, and then also the Kent County Road Commission to discuss funding possibilities and options for extending West Street. I don't know, I don't know what we're going to get of anything, but we're going to get nothing if, you know, unless we ask. So I think it sounds like our best opportunity might be with the Federal, uh, Economic Development Administration because they deal with transportation, economic growth, economic development. So we're going to look and at least ask the question what's available. There might be some, some monies available specifically for the road. There might be some dollars available to Display Pack to assist in their transition and their needs. Certain is going to be tied to job creation, as you heard on Mr. Hanson tonight. They're going to, they're going to be putting on fifty to seventy-five new employees in the, in the near term, and probably going up from that. So that might get us to the, to the level we need to take advantage of funding from the state and federal agencies. What, and we're going to go in with several requests. Number one, to take West Street all the way down to nineteen, or to sixteen mile road. Also, where, um, West Street ends and then goes back to the east to go access back to the water treatment plant, we're wanting to pay back because, uh, Display Pack is going to have offices on that in the building, and some parking. And we're also going to see if we can get funding to extend utilities down West Street extended to our city limits, and then stub out some water and sanitary sewer veins. Because that would then position us for development of that entire old lagoon site. So that's going to happen April second. I, I don't know what, if anything might occur, but, um, I'll report back on it. We'll at least ask the questions to the appropriate parties. Uh, next, I'm going to be on vacation beginning next Wednesday. And I won't be returning back to the state until the following Wednesday. I'll be back for the twenty-sixth. Um, Tom Stresman will be the acting city manager eighteen to the twentieth. And then Linda will be the acting city manager remainder of those days. And they'll have just a wide variety of options to contact me. As, as normal, I'll be monitoring my emails, and also, I'll be available by phone. The Open Meeting Act and parliamentary procedures thing is scheduled. And in my report, I indicated it was going to be May seventh. I got an email from MML today, and apparently there was a problem with one of the presenters when they're asking to postpone after the twenty-eighth, and it's another Thursday. Uh, and did that present any problems for anybody?
Thursday about what time?
It would start at six thirty.
I haven't seen it yet.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I thought that was one of the days that you specifically said we were available on Thursday.
So May twenty eighth?
May twenty eighth to six thirty, you're going to...
Anybody? Any, put that down?
Any problems? It's probably going to be three, three and a half hours. And we're going to have, um, the main presenter is going to be Bill Mathews. He's a general counsel for MML. He will present on the Open Meeting Act. And then Eleanor Coco Seaworth will present on parliamentary procedures. And they both come highly recommended. So I would suggest that between now and then, you fill us the questions together, that you might want addressed.
Do we have room for, for instance, the chair of the planning commission, um, the chair of the duty?
The open meeting.
Okay. Open to the general public. Great.
Yep, yep. Uh, the, the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand and sixteen budget schedule will present a draft budget council at the April meeting. It'll be, uh, just, just a quick presentation. Uh, we get just a couple of things. But the, the big...
That's the regular April meeting?
That's regular April meeting. And then, we have workshop scheduled for Thursday, April thirtieth at six thirty. And that's where we're, we're diving deep into the budget. But that gives you, um, several weeks to kind of look at it. And I'll remind you of the April meeting that if you can start looking at it, and if you have questions between the, the April regular meeting and the workshop, please get ahold of us. And then we'll, we'll go through everything. Right now, first blush, it looks pretty good for us. But a lot of that is because we're, we're realizing some savings from the, uh, the county department. But it allows us to put some other things in the, in the budget that's been, we've been wanting to give in that we think are prioritized. So, um, I, I, I think that's a very realistic question. Uh, we already talked about the videotaping of council meetings. Uh, Solen Township grant for the FOIA study. They selected a vendor, and it's going to be municipal consulting services. Their fee is twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars plus some expenses. They were about ten thousand dollars less than the other bid. Um, I happen to know the principal in this. I, I did a study, or he did a study, uh, for a municipal house, I was involved in. Um, so I worked with him, and he's top shelf. He's got a lot of experience in doing this type of work. Um, and he also did some other studies for that same municipal house. So for that, then they'll write it back, uh, two or three times. It's good. So I'm comfortable, uh, with a good look at the operations. And also, uh, tomorrow, and the mayor alluded to it, is that there is an opportunity for council members, if you wish, to get in on a, um, telephone conference call with the governor to talk about this proposal one. If, and I, I sent that out to, to council by email. If you're interested, we have to get, get you signed up. So let me know, send me an email something, and we'll get you signed up. And it starts at two thirty, and it's going to be about thirty minutes. And it's open to, uh, managers and council members.
You have to, you can submit a question, but in a timely manner to them, and he might address it. Depending on how many gifts.
It's an opportunity. I don't know, you know, we'll see. I'm, I'm planning on listening in. So if any of you want to, let me know, I'll get you the link. And you can, you can register, and then, once you're registered, then they'll, they'll give you the access appointment.
Will it be recorded?
I, I don't know. I don't know if it's going to be recorded or not. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. Um, any question in the monthly department reports? We have a Department of Public Works report. Any questions of Tom? Police Department, we have Officer Kelly with us this evening. Good to see you guys out and about.
Yes.
I've seen some stops, and I think, thank you for your work on calming some traffic areas for speed. I think it's working. Any questions of the police department, Officer Kelly? Hearing none. I don't know, Marty, we've already heard a lot from him.
I'll have to watch this for questions. Other than that, I'd like to thank the council for, for your actions tonight. tonight on my purchase.
Thank you for bringing it to us, we understand, or at least I do, there are some incidents when that happens, and in that case, bring it on, I won't get after you like Linda Hunt did. Thank you.
Thank you for putting out our tires.
Yes, and thank all the firemen. City clerk? I know, she's gonna scold me, I got some stuff. Okay, the financial officer in charge here.
If anyone brought their budget books, I'd be happy to take them, so I can put them in it.
Oh, we'll give it to you.
Get those to them, so she can put in new pages.
Thank you.
Nobody will be on that list you don't wanna be on.
Yeah, I'm on.
I'm on, I'm still on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the knowledge.
Professional code inspection, we've had a report there, code enforcement, and then on the boards and commissions, we've had the downtown development, board of directors meeting, other planning commission meetings, and the library boards. Everybody's kinda looked over that stuff, like, is there any questions? Hearing none. We move along at this part of the evening on number eleven, council comments. I'll start with Mr. Clark.
First of all, I need to make, well, I'll extend again my apologies to your manager, Taylor, I inadvertently, and I apologize to this possible extent to everybody in staff that was, their schedule was interfered with. I had started some research four weeks ago, trying to gain understanding about what our needs were for the camera, and I spoke to a local vendor about getting the information. I failed to tell him that I was not ready, the council was not ready for him to come into the council chambers and question that, or anybody else about it, and he put off doing his work, I think, I think it was recently that he came in, was it not?
This is week.
I, I just, I should've thought to tell him that, and I did not, and I apologize for that. And I thank the, the council and the city for the opportunity of going to Michigan Municipal League Weekend, this may be my third time there, to their advanced weekender. I told them they need to get something else, because this is the end, as far as that, unless you want, the classes you can take online. So it was very valuable, as always, and I hope that I can use that information to be a better council member for everybody.
Mrs. Powell?
Well, I, I noticed probably the camera cut out a couple times tonight, Tom, didn't it? So, just make sure we get the, could see that video one way or another, say the, what else to say.
We need to look into that, because I don't know what happened, it's been working, tracked it.
It can't be the access point, that thing is huge. So it could be, but it could be the router, honestly.
Mrs. Conley?
I continue to be grateful for everyone in this room, including all of our wonderful citizens who have sat here for almost three-hour meeting, a lot of you. Thank you to all of the folks who make the numbers work, who provide crazy votes, who make the water safe to drink, who put out the fires and quick response times. I am thankful for the city manager who feels our questions, even when we seem frustrated, and I'm thankful for my fellow council members who work very hard and answer my crazy questions and my emails flying all over the place. I am just very grateful to live in this community. I have a lot of family and friends who live in other places that are not necessarily working as well as our community does, we have a lot of really fabulous things happening here, and that's very exciting to me, and I'm just very grateful to get to be a part of that.
Thank you. Mrs. Nixon?
I'd like to thank council and all people who sat through this meeting with us, it's long enough here, and I'm in the company chair, and also I'd like to thank our city manager for continuing to try to work through this whole video thing. I imagine we'll be contacting dialists and trying to figure out more, but thank you for being with us in the learning groups.
Thank you. Mr. Truesdale?
I'm pleased with the report of the snowmobile events, and so on and so forth, however, I was disappointed in hearing that some of you know that the snowmobile museum has been wanting to come into Cedar Springs for months and months, and we collectively, I'm not blaming anyone, but we collectively seemingly haven't been able to make any suggestions or, or much help to him, so they have sold out west of town and have bought in property in Sand Lake, so the snowmobile museum will now be a Sand Lake entity. I'm sorry that this has happened, because, you know, with the, with the event here being a success, it would've been nice to have them right here as an additional entity, but that's the story.
Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Well, I'd like to thank everybody that can't thank, there's a lot of people. But I also wanna thank the rest of the people that continue to try and move our community ahead, you know, working with the different trails, the different upcoming buildings, and all the people that are gonna work on this, we, faster plane in the next year or so. Hopefully, we'll have a good portion of the community that gets involved with that, I mean, that is open to everybody to put their input in it, and that as we put that out, it's something that we see being fulfilled versus just something going on paper or going on the internet. And for Marty, on his expanding shows that he has to be running, but that's one area that I have a monkey's chimp's on his firefight or rescuing and that. So kudos to everybody that, behind the scenes, that make things happen, let's TPW, fire department, and city hall. And also for Kathy for videotaping these for the last, how many years you've been videotaping? So if we ever need him, she probably got something.
She's a gamer.
What's that? That's my truth.
And I'd like to thank everyone and all for being here, setting to this long meeting, and, you know, and apologize to the council anyway, if I cut you short, I'm just trying to expedite and keep the meeting moving. We're almost ten o'clock, which, we only have two hour blocks on our recording system, so.
I almost, when you were gone, I was watching the clock, I thought for sure it was gonna get done at one or two minutes, and I, it was gone.
Yeah, you know, and thank all the people here tonight, and the people working in the community to make this thing, the city of Cedar, a great place. The businesses coming to town, we've got a lot of good things gonna happen here, probably in the next six months to two years, and hooray for our side, and, and everything's working well, and I appreciate that for allowing me to go to Florida for the week we had the last council meeting, even though we did have a high, or a low of twenty-eight degrees two days in a row, it wasn't long. But thank you all, and if I forgot anything, I'm sorry, but thanks to everyone, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would make that motion. Adjourn. Second.
We stand adjourned at ten oh nine fifty-eight.
I said three hours, he said, oh, no, no.